The committee and also members of the public, just so you know, we are recording this meeting and it will be available for review at a later time. Oh, perfect. Here's Susan as we speak. Excellent. We'll just wait for her. So the first item that we have is to approve the March 23rd, 2021 School Committee School Curriculum Subcommittee Minutes. I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to review them. Welcome, Susan. We're so glad you could join us. I will move the minutes. Is there anyone who is able to second them?
Let's see, I'll second.
Thank you, Barbara, and then we'll take a roll call vote. Barbara?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so those are all set. So the next item that we have on our agenda is a review of summer school programming and I am not sure, I know, right, Casey? I'm not sure. I believe that Michelle is not able to join us unexpectedly. So Casey, are you presenting or should I present the material that she sent me or do we?
You can, I mean, you can present. I was gonna just read off some of the updates from Michelle, but you can go ahead and do that.
No, that's okay. I don't mind sharing. I've been talking all day, although maybe everyone else has too, so. Although I don't talk all day, but I just, I've talked enough today. So do we want to share screen or do you want to just talk through the talking points? So Michelle Herman's unfortunately not able to join us, but she has prepared materials to give us an update on our summer programming. And I see Meg Messina is here as well to can also speak to the summer programming. Do we need to share screens or are we just gonna talk through it?
I think we can just talk through the points.
Okay.
It's really wordy because it's a Word document that she prepared and it's not, you know, slides that I think would be a little bit more accessible visually.
Afterwards, you could share the document with us.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, in fact, then we may want to share some of their, some visuals regarding the survey that might be, might go well on the screen though. Do you want me to, let's see, I have it pulled up if you want me to share when we get to that point.
Okay.
All right. All right. So you know what? I have it pulled up. Do you want me to, do you want me to start, Casey, and then you can join in? Is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So she's provided a curriculum update for today and the purpose is to provide for summer program, to provide some project-based academic enrichment and opportunities for community building and social and emotional learning. There is no cost to students. It's the, this is the additional summer programming, I believe, that was discussed at the full committee in our recent update. Will be a four-week program for students comprised of a pair of two-week cycles. Families will be able to opt into two-week or two-two-week cycles. A two-week cycle will be a single interdisciplinary project and the projects can vary from the fantastical developing a plan to colonize another planet to the concrete recommending improvements to a local park, for example. Projects could ensure that students practice the design process, collaboration, public speaking, and making arguments. Students who participate in the four weeks will experience two distinct projects, each grade level band, so entering first and second, entering third through fifth is another band, and entering sixth through eight has its own pair of projects for a total of six projects. Students could be organized by bands or by grade levels appropriate or as the numbers provide. I think that's to be determined. In addition to working on the two-week project, students will participate in community building work throughout the two-week cycle. Are there any notes that we should add or any commentary, Meg or Casey, that you think we should add to this sort of background information?
The only thing I would add is, I don't, I can't remember if you said at the beginning, Jennifer, is that this program, it would be no cost to students and family.
Yeah, it'll be no. So I, I think that, I mean, personally, I was really excited to hear this at our previous update because I think it's really important that we are able to offer some additional programming this summer for our K to two bands, but also which they have the reading support program, but also our three through five and our six through eight students. So I'm excited about this and I, I believe there was some high interest in this. So and does anyone have any questions about this piece? There was an April interest survey sent out and I'll go through the data that Michelle provided. Are there any questions so far about the summer programming? So this is in addition to the previously discussed programs that we reviewed at length in our previous meeting.
Who, who are we envisioning being the teachers for these programs?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Oh, Jennifer, you look like you were gonna say.
No, no, I don't know the answer to that question. I'll, you know, I'll, so I'd be interested to hear.
Yeah. Are you asking Helen whether or not it would be, I mean, we're planning on having our own, so PSB staff staff the program, provided that folks are willing and able and interested. Obviously, we're putting money aside in the budget to pay them and this includes EL staff, paraprofessionals, special education staff, all the staff that we would typically have in a school building for the most part to ensure that kids get access to the projects.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions at this point? So I'm gonna share my screen and we'll, at least I plan to. This way, I just think it's, she's got some nice visuals in here for this piece that might be helpful. So this is the, they sent out an, an interest survey for this summer programming option and there were 593 families that responded with interest overall in the program. It's not, I don't know if it gets into detail, but it wasn't originally split out into people who wanted to do a four-week program or a two-week program, but there was interest from 593 responses. There was interest across all eight schools. So here we can see the data for interest by homeschool and including 10% from currently registering to don't know. So those may be folks that are still in the RLA and maybe I'm sure I'm, I'm not, I mean, we can't speak to who that 10% is. We don't know. So we've got Baker, Driscoll, Heath, Lawrence, Lincoln, Pierce, Ruffin Ridley, and Runkel. Interest in all grades. So the program will be banded for students entering one, two, three to five and six to eight. So these are the grades that are entering. So you can sort of see it's, it's pretty, looks like pretty relatively closed pieces of pie here. So more than half of the students are interested in attending all four weeks. Some will only attend either the first or the second of two weeks. So this is a little bit more on the, how many? So we've got 52.8% interested in the four weeks in July. So this was not a commitment survey. This was an interest survey, I think is also important to discuss. And so we've got about 20.6%, about 21% interested, I'm sorry, so 27%-ish interested in the first two weeks, another 21% in the second two weeks and about 53% of the people were interested in all four. And this is a July program. 7% of the students would need transportation from Boston to attend and they will align the timing of the program with other programs to allow for use of Metco Busing. And 7% of students would need a full-day program in order to be able to attend. So they are working with partners right now to obtain full-day placements. Are there any questions about our summer programming? Andy?
Yeah, Casey, did I hear you say that you were planning to have EL staff as part of this program so that some kids who would otherwise want to be in Star Academy could, could do this instead?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't talked to Mindy about what that would look like. I imagine the supports at Star Academy are probably a bit more targeted for students. But when Michelle and I spoke about this, it was important that we had the support staff that students would typically have to access general education curriculum. So the short answer to your question is yes, that is the goal, is to have EL staff there. But would this general ed program replace Start Academy? I'm not, I don't, I don't want to say yes to that because I don't have enough info.
It just sounded like there maybe were considerably more referrals to Star Academy than they had spots. And so I was just wondering, this, this just came out at an LPAC meeting
Okay.
last week. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll connect with Mindy actually about that.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure folks get spots regardless.
Okay, and we had discussed at a previous curriculum subcommittee meeting as well, being interested in having, you know, Mindy come back or who, any programs come back if there was a, a large number of students needing a program and not enough spots and to talk about that. And I know we don't want to let that wait. We are, we are well into the, you know, budget season and so I don't know what the potential is for expanding Star Program, but there was at the time, interest from subcommittee members in discussing that further. Are there any other questions about summer programming? I know this is a little bit shorter. Are there any other pieces, Meg, that you think that we need to be aware of?
Just that we are going to be expanding per our conversation, the last curriculum subcommittee meeting, our project discovery to include three to fifth grade. So we're excited about that and we've found the, you know, we have the funding to do that. So Joanna is in the process of putting that together.
Do we have any idea about how many students in grades three through five will be able to expand the program to encompass?
That's a good question. I think up to 60, but I need to double check that with Joanna. So it would be up to 180.
And so would that be based on teacher referral?
It's based on teacher referral and invitation, yes.
So a question about that. So we have the four weeks in July. In some respects, it would be nice if those 60 kids could be part of, be, have the option or the possibility of being in the four weeks and then have, is this a four-week? How, how long is the project discovery? Is it two weeks, four weeks?
It's four weeks. It's July 6th to the 30th.
So there's no way of moving that to August, for instance?
It's, it's planned, I mean, invitations have already gone out. So it's, it's planned months in advance. So to switch it around at this point would be really.
No, but you said you were adding the third through fifth grade.
Right. And so that's being added to the, the same, the same building, the same time period, the same structure because we have one director that's running it. So.
Well, if we do this again, it would be nice to be able to cover the summer, you know? I mean, we're spending the money anyways. Why not, you know, allow kids to, to have both options? I mean, you know, those same kids could probably benefit from from, from more rather than less, but.
Do you mean doubling the program, Helen, or?
Well, no, not doubling. So if I hear you correctly, we have the project discovery and the project, what's the other one? Achieve, I can't remember the different names, but the first through fifth grade programs. We're doing the four weeks of first through eighth grade. You know, and then if we could do after that, the, the recovery type stuff. It's just more dosage is what I'm trying to think of more than anything else.
Right, right.
So I don't know if that's possible or not, but but that, that's just a thought.
Right. I mean, I also think that, you know, the, the timeline hasn't been set for the general ed program yet. So you know, in terms of when that's going to be happening, right, Casey? That's, those dates aren't firmly set, are they?
Well, we, we said that it would be the month of July.
That's what I thought, yeah. Well, okay. I, I do wish I'd thought about it ahead of time because I think it would have been nice to allow some of this because even if they did two weeks of it, to be able to to access it. So, thank you.
Yeah, sure. So do we know what the next steps are for solidifying what this new summer programming will look like?
I think one of the biggest pieces is posting these positions so that we can start hiring folks.
Because we'll need to get firm numbers on how many people, how many students we have, how many families we have, you know, how many per grade, how many spots and getting, I don't know, figuring out how many we can accommodate. I guess that's my next question, series of questions is sort of how many students can we afford to accommodate? And how do we go about, you know, sort of confirming registrations, so to speak? So that we know how many students are coming, what, what their bands are, where we're gonna host it. All those sort of details so that we can make sure we hire the right number of teachers and we have the right number of support staff and the right number of classrooms.
Right.
Those kinds of things.
Right, right. Because you'll see when we present ESY, Melissa has a list, a grid with all of the buildings that will be used for ESY programming this summer. And I'm sure Meg can provide more info too on the other summer programs and the spaces expected to be used.
Yeah, and I think we did, when we met last time, I wrote down the notes for where those programs will be, but I think this new program, you know, it's new. So we, I, I don't know if we have a home or homes for it yet. So that would be, that would be good information to get for an update. You know, like sort of where, what's the next steps? How do families, you know, make a commitment?
Yeah.
Or that spot? How do they know if they are getting a spot? We've got the interest survey, but sort of what are the next steps for this and you know, I believe this has all been budgeted for, if I'm not mistaken. Unless Susan, you have any other information? Just, I ask because you're in finance, but Megan, Casey, is it also your understanding that this summer school programming has been budgeted for and is part of the budget?
It is, yeah. So Mary Ellen gave us an update on that. I believe it was late last week to say that it has been budgeted for. I think the bigger piece is now, like you said, Jennifer, really the logistics. I know that Michelle and I have some time scheduled next week because the schools will be closed. It'll be a little bit quieter to get some of this logistics planning done. So I'm sure by the next curriculum subcommittee or maybe even at the larger school committee meeting, we'll have some more info in terms of where we are with planning.
Okay. That's great. Does anyone else have any other questions? And are we anticipate, I assume at this point in the planning process, this is the last additional summer school programming that that we're going to be planning to offer? Or are there any other possibilities, I guess, is my only other question? Is there any other additional programming we might offer?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think between all the summer programs that Meg is helping to plan, ESY, and then this bigger summer enrichment program endeavor, I think we're covering a lot of ground, which I'm really proud of.
Yeah, no, this is, I, I'm very excited about this new, the new development, this sort of general ed, like much larger sort of broad-based offering. This, I think, something I was hoping that we would be able to offer. So this is, and I think others as well. So I think this is really exciting. Does anyone have any other questions about summer school programming? This is a shorter meeting today, so just for members of the community who are joining us as well. This is one of our shorter meetings. It was more, it's more of an update today. So we've sort of got a, a bigger picture. Any questions for summer programming? Okay.
The. Can I add just a quick update or not really just to add on to what you were talking about with the summer enrichment programming? So my team has begun to meet to discuss what supports can look like during this enrichment program and in particular Maria Litas working with me to think through what, how to build in social emotional supports even into the structure of the day. So what are those practices, instructional practices, even down to greeting each student at the beginning of the day that we can begin to infuse into the programming so that students get that social emotional support that's really intentional too?
Yeah, that's, that's a really, I, that's something that was sort of mentioned in the document that Michelle provided about the social emotional pieces. And I think, you know, it would be great to sort of think about whether it's one program or another, but say running morning meeting, like a responsive classroom, at least running a morning meeting and having that, really building that sense of community for those several weeks. Because if they're, we're gonna be doing project-based interdisciplinary work, there's got to be a lot of teamwork and a lot of collaboration and building that sense of community and having a safe space to take risks and learn, I think is going to be critical to, to a really successful program. So I'm glad to hear that that's going to be an integral part of planning. That's great. So the other thing that we have on our agenda for today, Casey's here and I think Melissa's joined her to talk to us about extended school year services and compensatory services.
Great. I am going to share my screen so that folks can see. So the first half of these slides, I actually presented to school committee at the last meeting or maybe it was two week meetings ago now on COVID compensatory, but I know that not everybody was able to attend. So I'll run through these slides relatively quickly with more time focused for Melissa on ESY. So just some quick background for folks. Back in March 2020, our schools were suspended for the remainder of the school year. A few days after that, we were able to get an update from the Federal Department of Education clarifying that districts are required to still provide FAP despite schools, the buildings actually themselves being closed. There was a caveat there in that guidance or clarification from the federal government that services may look different, given that our buildings are closed, but that schools were still required to provide FAP to students with disabilities. Despite our best efforts, there are students who did not receive special education and/or related services that were needed in order to make progress on their IEPs. And so the federal government did issue a bit more guidance on this, letting schools and districts know that an individualized determination had to be made in terms of whether or not students needed qualified for compensatory services and to what extent. The Massachusetts has itself coined the term COVID-19 compensatory services. I won't read the slide, but the slide here is the definition that the state has given on what COVID compensatory services are. I just want to step back for a moment and note that there are also general education recovery supports that are separate from compensatory services and much of this is the support that we're hoping to build into the academic enrichment program that we were just talking about. A note here that's important for folks is that it doesn't constitute special education and doesn't need to be identified by the IEP team. It really is an opportunity for students who may have some gaps or didn't have the opportunity during this past school year to work on specific skills, which includes their social emotional well-being. So talk a bit about priority groups that DESI asked districts to prioritize in the planning for compensatory services. These are students with complex and significant needs. So a lot of these students actually fell into our first return cohort. Preschool-age students whose eligibility evaluations or the start of pre-K special education services didn't happen or were delayed. And then students who were transitioning out of the school district. So when they turned 22 and their transition programs were interrupted. So these are the priority groups that DESI asked us to take into consideration first as we were making a list of who was going to qualify for COVID compensatory services and by how much. Very much like services listed on an IEP, the type of COVID compensatory service that each student would get is very individualized. You may have four different areas that you're focused on in your IEP, but you may not require compensatory services in all four areas of your IEP, in the IEP goals. And so it's really the IEP team that gets together. And of course, that includes the family to determine what COVID compensatory services are appropriate. In terms of where we are, we have about 150 students from BEEP all the way through our transitions programming to whom we've offered compensatory services. We've already started. We have been providing COVID compensatory services. The goal is to provide all of our services by the end of the school year. We do anticipate some exceptions. We have a staffing shortage in, at the high school. We have a speech and language pathologist who has had to step away for a little bit. And so we are in the process of delivering some of those services, but we're again, hoping to be done by the end of the school year, but we are preparing to develop some additional services to be provided over the summer for BHS students in speech. And if we don't get to those, then perhaps we will have to add to it once the school year begins. It's not as easy, I think, for older students to come back for summer services when school gets out. Again, the goal is for BEEP and at the K to eight students who did get COVID compensatory services to be done by June, but if they don't access them by June, we are, have a contingency planned for the summer. In terms of summer options, just want folks to look at this table here because we do have two different programs coming out of OSS this summer. The one on the left really is just, again, the sort of what we don't finish during, before the school year in terms of compensatory services. We think there's probably about 10 or 15 students who, who qualify for COVID compensatory and these are based on known families that there are scheduling conflicts or there's other things that are happening where the student isn't available and can't access COVID compensatory services until the summer. And again, that really cost-wise differs simply because it, you know, the cost of personnel varies depending on the specialization of the personnel curriculum. So the need to purchase, whether or not the student can come in person versus a remote option. So we would just need to make sure we have technology for that. And then on the right side of the table is our traditional ESY program, which Melissa will go more in depth on, but we have about 300 students every year. We have about 300 students who participate. We do have a small number of students who you see here, about 10 to 15 students who qualify for ESY, but also qualified for COVID compensatory services. Again, the goal is to have this completed by the end of the school year. But we may have some who require it over the summer. Cost-wise, it's the IDEA grant that covers the cost of ESY, which typically is hovered around $500,000. Again, it depends on what we're offering that year or what, what's required rather in terms of staffing. So we'll jump into ESY and then we can, the folks can just hold questions at the end. That would be great because I think ESY, this presentation from Melissa may clarify some questions that folks may have. So Melissa, I can continue advancing the slides. Just let me know when you want me to move on.
Sure. So the extended school year program is targeting students who have an IEP and it's been determined in an IEP meeting that a student requires ESY. We're looking at students who have significant, significant regression and they take longer to recoup their skills. So we know that all students may lose some skills over 10-week period. And we typically expect students to recoup those skills in about four to six weeks. So we're really using data from the beginning of the year on how long it takes students who have IEPs to recoup some of, some of those skills. So some of the criteria, loss of performance levels that were attained before a break in service. So not only do we look at when students return in the fall, we also look at after they return from a three-day weekend, holiday break, equal break. So we're looking at that data throughout the year. We also take into consideration the child's limited learning rate, which lengthens the amount of time it takes a child to review or relearn a previously learned skill. And we also know that we've taken into account the fact that the time for that child to accomplish such, such recruitment is greater than the period of time that the school district allows other children to review or relearn those skills. You can advance it, Casey. Some other criteria too. It's not just about the recruitment of skills. It may also be that a student's skills are much lower than what is expected and because of their rate of learning is much slower than their peers, they may also require extended school year. Require extended school year. So for extended school year this year, we have about three hundred students who have qualified. We are planning for in person service, but an opt out option is available for families who do who do require remote service. We're really encouraging families for the in person, if it is at all at all possible, we feel like that transition is going to help our students in the fall. And registrations now open through an individual invitation as determined in the students students I E P, so most families have received. Notification, there are some families who haven't received notification yet because I E P meetings are still happening and the team is maybe waiting for. After April break to make that determination. And then on the last slide, you can see sort of the number of programs that we have. We have some of our specialized specialized programs also running during extended school year. We have RISE and the Adaptive Learning Center that sort of come together to form one program. Our lab program is the lab program that runs at Driscoll, our social emotional. Our social enrichment learning center, that is a program really focusing on social skills, pragmatic skills, classroom. Classroom participation goals, so the whole, all of our programs are running, some are four weeks, some are five weeks. Some run Monday through Thursday, nine nine to eleven, some run Monday through Friday, nine until one. The three buildings that we at this point are slated to use are. Rough and Ridley, Runcle. Actually are the only two buildings, because we are combining deep into Runcle School this year, we did that last year and it worked really well. Having all of our RISE programs, RISE programs together. Any specific questions about, I can give you more information about each specific program, but it's really aligned up with the programs that. That we that we have in the district.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I should know this, Melissa, do they get a separate I E P or set of goals for the summer, or is it just a continuation of what they have?
Just a continuation of what they have, and I think it's important to note, we're working on maintaining skills. So we're not necessarily working on progressing their skills, we're working on just maintaining what they ended the school year with.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, we're not stopping progression, but you know, we're responsible for maintaining those skills.
Is there a reason that the programs are different times and different lengths of. Thursday and the summer at eleven, summer, it's.
Right, we're really looking at the the programs that run nine to one Monday through Friday are students who really are in our sub separate programs. So we are not replicating what a student's grid is, that's not what they need to maintain skills. So depending on the student's needs, the severity, depending is what determines the length of those of those programs. And those lengths are there, but there's also individual individual decisions, if a student needs. To work on their reading goals three times thirty during E S Y, they're not necessarily going to be in our learning center for two hours a day. You know, we also want to promote the least destructive environment in the summer and allow students other opportunities.
Do others have questions about the E S Y program?
Is it a wraparound program, can they get extended day to the program or camping?
There is a camp that is held at a couple of of schools, schools in town, there is specifically one that is at Runcle School. So some of the students will attend extended school year and then go right in, go go right into that. We've had other students that bust to some of the other programs programs in town. Sometimes it doesn't always work for every student, because it depends on what the student's E S Y schedule is. But we try to make it work with the families.
Yeah, that could be complicated if you're if you get out at eleven, but the secondary program doesn't start till one or something like that, like it or. Because the hours of the other summer school programs are are different, right? I think, I mean, that would be interesting to sort of look at for how many families are not able to participate because of the partial day and in what ways.
In the past, we've had families who have had that issue and we've been able to work with them.
So it shouldn't be a barrier to to participating, right?
We wouldn't want it to be, no. We can't meet every individual family's needs, but we do work and to try to resolve that.
I'm sorry, jumping in late, but I just want, when you were talking about camps, there's usually like a half an hour gap at most between. The end of E S Y and the beginning of camp, and so if kids have their lunch, you know, they can have lunch and if they have needed a pair, we've. Provided a pair to have lunch with them so that then they can just go to the camp, at least the ones that are on site, so.
That's that's good to know. I'm just sort of trying to, you know, visualize if they've got that half an hour gap, do we have, is there supervision for for that?
There's some, yeah, I mean, the kids that really have to have it, I mean, and also sometimes the the rec staff are there setting up so they can like. Well, in in the past, pre COVID, they could, you know, go sit outside and have lunch or go to the gym and eat their lunch.
Does, are there any other questions about extended school year or compensatory services?
I guess if I could, Jennifer, just is there, is there anything different in this year because we've had a pandemic year this past year or the E S Y is pretty much. Running the way we've always run it.
It's for the most part running the way that that we've always run it, we are continuing, you know, last year, more of it was done in a. Remote setting and we just had very small numbers in the building, so we're bringing more students hopefully back back into the buildings. You know, we really tried to separate if students. Lost any skills when they returned, was it because of extended school year or was it because of COVID compensatory, so we've tried to. Separate that a little bit and that there are some students who we really think need need COVID COVID compensatory services. Not not extended school year.
I guess I'm just come, I'm sort of stuck a little bit on the, just the timing and the scheduling. Being so different, I know that when we have our other programs, like we, it's been a practice to sort of. Collaborate with other providers to sort of stack the hours and sort of make it so it could be a full day program and I just. I'm wondering if we can sort of really think about that as we go through the summer, if this is some, you know. We've been doing it for a while, I I just, I guess what I'm saying is I want us to just be thoughtful and see if there are ways that we could adjust. So that it works really well for families to have a full day program based on what kind of other. Programs, summer camp programs, whether it's through Brookline Rec or Base or other providers. That they can have a program that allows them to have that full day so that working families have. Have that option, it might be really tricky if you're just doing, you know, whatever, was it nine to eleven, I can't remember the start time, I know someone.
I think what the difference is, is that for extended school year, it's really mandated service off of students I E P. And so we're looking specifically at what students individual minutes cover. I do think that this year with the addition of this other program and the general education that families have have a few more choices. I think it would take a significant change to the E S Y program. If we just, you know, it would, it would change it by extending and having everyone in the same same times.
I think also to your point, Jennifer, so there is a. Once, once, I don't remember, I think maybe in February, once February hits. Everybody, those in town who offer a summer program for children begin meeting monthly. And sometimes more frequently once planning goes underway, and there are discussions about lining up programs in terms of space and timing. And if students have to travel, what time should the receiving program start? Because students may have to take a bus, Matt Gillis is, you know, he plays a huge role in these summer partners meeting so that. We can offer, we meaning like the big royal, we can offer a full day of programming while meeting mandatory minutes, but also knowing that. There are some kids who just can't, you know, it's hard for families to pick up at eleven oh five, Monday to Thursday.
Yeah, I I mean, that would be, that would be a challenge for, I think, a number of families, so and I and I wasn't necessarily suggesting that the hours of E S Y. Would need to change, but just the collaboration with those community organizations so that it lines up so that we can help. You know, families to make it easier for them, you know, by as a community sort of facilitating that timeline, so if this is what our program is going to be and. You know, I think it might be helpful to think about some of that consistency of whether it's a four or five day program and the length, just that there's a lot of different things going there. And it's going to be easier to line up with a full day program if it's not so scattered sort of about, you know, summer one, summer eleven. I don't know, maybe it's by school, I don't, I don't know.
Specifically by the extended school year program that a student is recommended for. So again, our more sub separate programs where students are pulled out of general education for the majority of the day are in those nine to one Monday, Monday through Friday programs.
And are they all clustered at one school, I guess that's, I didn't have the list in front of me, so I was like, well, is it all nine to one programs at one school and nine to eleven at another?
It's not, because we do, what we have is at Runcle School, for instance, we also have our K. To grade five learning center students and then our upper learning center students are at. Ruffey and Ridley, and those programs typically that operates from eleven, I mean, from nine until until eleven. It does help actually having them staggered a little bit because it allows us to have smoother smoother transitions. But so it's not by by building, it's by what 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 the program is. And again, even within that program, students might have their own individualized schedule because they either need more or less.
And can you just remind me, I don't have the slide in front of me, about how many students we expect would to be able to service in E S Y?
So typically we service close to three hundred.
And that's all in the budget and it's all set, right? Does anyone else have any other questions? Awesome, thank you for for coming, Melissa and Nadine, I appreciate it, and Casey, do you have other things to add, Casey?
I think Susan had a question.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Susan, my apologies.
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, so it's a good discussion, thank you. I guess I just, are are there any things that you anticipate that we're going to hear in the community? About just reactions, and if there are, it would be great to hear thoughts on. What what those might be, just so that we can be prepared for questions that you guys have gotten from parents. Or anything else we should just sort of be aware of out there.
I think parents will always have the question that we talked about earlier too, should my student participate in Project Discovery or should they participate in the. Four week enrichment program, you know, can my student do one week of this program and then the rest of the week in extended school year? Could they do two weeks in this and then two weeks in extended school year? And those, I mean, we're, we work with families around that all the time, you know, it's. Participating in extended school year is an all or nothing, you know, we work with, you know, what weeks work for you, what times work for you.
Yeah, I think a distinction that might be helpful for. The school committee members who are on here and if you are asked is extended school year really is for students with much higher needs than those that we're imagining. Who would participate in the summer enrichment program, you know, you have E S Y on your I E P because data has shown that you show substantial regression. When you're not in school. And another point too with E S Y is that it's it's a special ed program, so there is an inclusion happening during E S Y. So that's something to think about if folks are reaching out that you could, I think, sort of feed back to families if they're asking, how do I make this? Decision, because the summer enrichment program really is, I think, a wonderful inclusion opportunity, but it really depends on your students' needs. Thanks for asking that question, that was, I think, hopefully that's helpful.
Can you, can you talk for a second more, Casey, about this idea of like inclusion in summer programming? So I, I mean, I I understand what extended school, you know, like the purpose and the goals of the extended school year, you know, and qualifications for such and. There's been some interest in the community and talking about inclusion and summer summer school. And sort of what that could or might look like, and I I don't know that we're set up for that this summer at this point, but. Do you have, does anyone have any thoughts or ideas about this that they could share with us that could be, you know, helpful in this conversation in the community?
I, I just want to make sure we're, we're, you were talking about the same thing, by inclusion, do you mean students with disabilities who want to partake? In non special ed activities, let's say, something that like Brookline Rec offers?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what all of the community members that, you know, are talking about this mean specifically, and I do think inclusion. Needs to be sort of defined in conversation, because I think it means different things to different folks, and so I think that's a little bit, I don't want to speak for people, I'm not sure. What their intentions were in using that or what that might look like, but I guess I would think about it in the terms of. What it might happen in a regular school year as far as inclusion and.
Well, I will say, I will say, Jennifer, I mean, it's something that I've discussed with people in the community, parents, CPAC. We've met with the with the recreation department, you know, there was hopes that last summer we were going to be able to offer. An activity, unfortunately, COVID disrupted that, you know, we haven't moved forward with that this summer. So, you know, there have been, there, there have been discussions and it has become a little more complicated. And I think the discussions should continue and what that looks like for each family and each student and, you know, is certainly individualized. The Brookline Rec Adaptive Program are, two summers ago, offered this great group. It wasn't necessarily inclusion, it was recreation opportunities that that where they were able to support some of our higher needs. Students, and that went over really well. So it is something that has been discussed and I think should continue, continue to be discussed.
Yeah, I'd like, I just sort of want to us to sort of be really mindful of that and and think about that, I'm not sure. What that looks like going forward, but I I definitely think we should continue the conversation as we as we go forward in planning. Just thinking about what that means and what it could look like, and what that programming could look like, I mean, I feel like things are pretty set up for this year and. We're really not in a spot where we have a lot of time to make major programmatic sort of changes, but I think. It's a conversation worth having and thinking about, and I don't think we have enough information to sort of have that discussion now clearly, but just something for us to be thinking about that. You know, sort of envisioning what that might look like, what it could look like, if we could do what we wanted, if we had the ability to do that.
And I think it will take partnering with other community, community activities to make it successful.
Great. All right, it's four forty seven, and I just want to be mindful of people's time, are, but I don't want to rush, are there any other questions that folks have about? Anything to do with summer programming, extended school year, compensatory service, oh, I had one, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, so if students, we have this this timeline, a great timeline of trying to get all the. COVID compensatory services done by June, and if we don't make that, we have a backup plan for the summer, how might that look? And I don't know what number, there was only maybe ten to fifteen students that it's anticipated might fall into this sort of gray area. What would that look like for students who need the compensatory services but also would participate in an extended school year program? Because I suspect there might be some overlap there, what, what have we thought about what that kind of scheduling and programming might look like? And can we do both in the summer if we need to?
I think mostly we can, I think for our highest need students, it'd be a little trickier, but I think really most of those students should be covered by by the end of the year. For other students, you know, if they, just an example was if they, you know, if they qualify for math. Three times sixty, but then we also go compensatory, we could easily add another math math session in every week. So there are ways to to get to get creative, we have the staffing, so it might, it may be extending a staff stay. So that they're able to cover the group, so I don't think it's going, it's going to be hard to do that. Do you agree, Nadine, because you've been working on it too, but I think for the most part.
I think it, because a lot of it is going to be related services that still. Might not have been able to be worked in during the school year, that part's very easy to work around, tack on, things like that. So I'm not, I'm not worried, I think we can do this.
Is it something that families might just stay an extra half an hour and get those services or just. Okay, so they might just stay on after the nine to eleven and and get some services once a week or whatever it is, okay.
We should have all the stuff right there, so we can just.
Okay, great, so again, I interrupted myself from asking if there were any last questions. Thank you all for coming and talking with us today and giving us this update, it's very helpful to be able to have these conversations. It's very helpful to be able to have these conversations and to get the information. I appreciate it. So thank you all for coming, you know, late in the afternoon to talk with us. We have, for those of you in the community that would like to attend the policy subcommittee, a number of us will be leaving this meeting and heading over to that meeting. So I hope to see some of you there. And we will be meeting again to talk about the second essential curriculum. So we'll be meeting after the break in April. All right. So we'll see everybody then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.